Okay, call the meeting to order. It's a little after six thirty. This is our regular called meeting for Monday, May eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, in the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got Matt, and I'm about to butcher your last name because I just can't quite read it.
J- Jutton.
Jutton?
That's hard.
All right. Items four and five, we'll hold that until those items come up, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. And then Tyler and Chris, and y'all didn't give any easy names tonight.
No, sir.
What's that last, what's that last name?
Archondus.
Archondus? That's pretty easy. All right, so Tyler and Chris, any particular agenda items y'all want to speak on tonight, or just in general?
In general.
Okay, so with that, floor is yours. Y'all've got a few minutes, so have at it. If you'd just please step to the mic, tell us who you are and where you live, and then roll on.
Okay, I thought that was gonna be at the end, I apologize.
No, 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 it's public comments is next item, so.
Okay. Um, I've become aware of there's been talk about expanding Johnson Lane, making it wide, a little bit wider, three lanes. I was wondering about which direction y'all are gonna go with the easements on that. Are you going to the west or to the east? I've been seeing survey markers going down the road, so I was curious about that information.
Kevin, you want?
We're not surveying yet that I know of. Jacob, we haven't done anything on that. That's probably, could be cable, not cable, what's the word, fiber optics? We've got somebody in town on fiber optics deal going on, but our easement won't change. We'll be within the same footprint we have, but my suspicion is the pavement will widen in both directions. Is that about right?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, well, in certain areas, yes.
And we're talking Johnson Drive, we're talking about traditional from eighty-four around to?
Yeah, it'll go all the way from eighty-four down to the new intersection with Judith and Blue Moon.
Okay. Yeah, and what's the timing on widening, if any?
You'll learn that on the fifteenth.
On the fifteenth of, uh?
This month, yeah. We're gonna have to have a special meeting swear in, and I've got two, three items will be on that agenda. The paving problem will be one of them.
So y'all don't have much information on that yet, then? That'll be the fifteenth?
Yeah, but it'll be within the same footprint, but the pavement will widen generally the same on both sides, all the way through, but I don't have much, we're gonna have to increase the footprint at all, but we'll have a little more information on that.
So you're talking like where the shoulder goes from to gravel, you're just gonna turn that into asphalt, and you're not gonna like extend it out into the grasses?
I'm not the engineer, but the engineer's behind it.
Understandable.
Potentially, just depending on where it's at. I mean, we're just, we're gonna take, we'll take a look at it. I mean, we're gonna propose a project to the city of McGregor. Obviously, the council would have to approve that project. If they want to move forward with it, then at that point, we'll start looking at it, but as the city manager mentioned, there at this point, there's no plans to acquire any right of way, but we may add some shoulders, depending on where it is, when they decide to add, kind of a right turn lane, which would include a little bit of additional paving, so we can add that striping and something, but we haven't gotten that far down the road yet.
Okay, and that would be on the fifteenth is when y'all, is that open to the public?
We'll have a design on it.
We will have a design on it, again, I'll just be presenting it to the council, kind of presenting the overall concept to the council and getting their buy-in on it before we, just before we move forward. So like, we don't, we don't, as a city engineer, we don't have a, we don't have a contract with the city to perform any of that at this point.
Okay.
It's all kind of just conceptual.
All right, that's all I had, thank you.
You bet. Sounds like fifteenth, we'll all learn a little bit about it, then. Uh, Chris, Archondus, you're next.
Well, the only question I had was more of the same, but I don't know who I should direct it to, but you said that you hadn't got any plans and it was gonna be expanded in very, you didn't know which parts, so, um, well, I guess my question is the same. On the fifteenth, are you gonna have more of an idea? Because where we live, there's gonna be a, the nursing, skilled nursing home across the street, and so that's already gonna be a, he's already talked about it, discussed, you know, the lights and stuff coming in the house, and the sirens all night long, and different things like that. And so my concern is that if they've already got their plot planned where they're gonna build, then is that gonna encroach on, on our property? You said at this point, there's no plans to take away anyone's easement, right?
Right.
So on the fifteenth, is that when you'll have more of a detailed and specific idea of where the road is gonna be wider, and where it's gonna be within the same footprint?
Um, probably not. We, the initial plan right now is to do what's called a reclamation, which means we'll, for the most part, again, just be taking generally the same width of the existing pavement and reclaiming it and repaving it, is, is the plan. And again, we'll propose that to council, see how council wants to move forward with that, or if they want to move forward with a different type of rehabilitation or even reconstruction. Again, we'll evaluate, um, really where the, what the width in some of those areas are, and if we can get, you know, if we just need a little bit of additional paving, we may consider doing that, so we can allow for safer turning movements.
Okay.
But in general, it will follow the same center line, and again, we're probably, there's no plans at this point to acquire any right of way for any of those reasons.
Okay, because the reason I'm asking is, is at the chamber meeting last week, I'm not sure if it was you or the other gentleman that spoke, city manager, I think it was you, they said they were gonna make that three lanes.
Correct, so the?
So how do you put three lanes where two are right now without taking easement rights?
Well, so there's actually, there's shoulder there as well.
Uh-huh.
So we'll just take the shoulder, and that'll become part of the travel lane, and you'll have a continuous center left turn lane down the center.
Okay.
So the pavement width is there, for the most part. Again, there may be some areas where we need to add a little bit of additional, but for the most part, your pavement width is already there.
Okay.
So we'll just, it'll basically be just a, it'll be a reclamation, again, we'll fill up the existing pavement, make sure the base is in good condition, repaint it and re-stripe it, so that it has one lane each direction with a continuous left turn lane.
Perfect. Thank you, no further comment.
All right.
Either way, we're not looking at any additional right of way at all.
Correct.
Right, right. It'll be within the same right of way.
Correct.
We're not gonna disturb anybody's property lines.
Excellent, thank you.
You bet. Okay, that takes us to, Jacob, thanks for that information there, appreciate it. Uh, it takes us to item one A, which is the consent agenda to consider approving minutes of council meeting held on April tenth, um, two thousand and twenty-three. And, yeah, we're holding those. Yep, yep, we will pass those until the fifteenth meeting, just not quite ready on those. So there's no item, or no action to take under item one A. That takes us to item two. Uh, we've got a couple of these, items two, three, yeah, two and three are related, uh, to this skilled nursing facility we've been talking about for a few months now. So item two is the public hearing on a final plat of a skilled nursing facility off Johnson Drive and Sixth Street, being eight point two six three acres, out of the original called ninety point two five five acres, minute barret survey abstract number seventy-five, and being part of that called ninety-two point two seven acres of land described in a deed to the Lester Eugene Robertson et al. as the, as recorded in volume thirteen oh five, page three oh six of the deed records of McClinney County, Texas, document number two thousand and six, zero one three five nine five. Brian?
Good evening, council mayor. Angela, can you dim the lights just a little bit? Thanks. Uh, this is, as you said, a little bit over eight acre site, that's off of Johnson Drive, a little bit north of A one hundred building. We previously rezoned it general commercial from residential the last couple of weeks. Their layout is good. They did move the driveway right in line with Seventh Street. I think it was a little bit off before. Ninety beds, skilled nursing facility, forty-three thousand square feet. Parking is ample. Our zoning calls for a half space per bed, so they only need forty-five beds. They have eighty-three on their plan. Twelve inch water line is on Johnson, and there is a proposed new eight inch sewer line with a forced main along the south fence, oops, right here. There'll be a sewer line that'll run to Crane Street. Previous concern was for headlight pollution. Um, he emailed me today and said that they intend to do, uh, earth and berm with some vegetation, or raise this up along here, so that, really the only point is coming out where the headlights shouldn't expose anything, so.
Wait, 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 so when the headlights coming out, then you're saying that it is now lined up with Seventh Street?
That's, that's what their latest is right here. This is Seventh Street.
All right.
And I believe it used to be right here, so it was a little bit off, so they moved it, scooched it, and then they wanna put a earth and berm with some vegetation on either side.
Okay. What about the lights on the inside of the, so anybody talked about those? I know they can make lights now, so they're not?
He, uh, in the first, the first conversation we had after the lighting issue came up, he sent me a link of a type of product that they're trying to use, and it just shoots the light straight down. It doesn't have a lot of residual light pollution that comes off, so it's, it's LED light and it's pretty much straight down.
Okay. Carry on.
Well, that's all I had.
Oh, okay. Okay, so we've been through, so we, this is our third meeting, does that sound right?
They did.
We started with the initial like concept plan, then we came for preliminary plat.
They did a rezoning, and then preliminary, and this is the final.
Okay, and so it's been through the zoning board once or twice?
Twice. Well, three, this is the third recommendation from the zoning board.
Okay, so the zoning board three times, and now council will be three times also. Okay. Have you had any pushback at all about, from the developers, about things that we wanted done or needed to be done?
No, they seem pretty, like they want to be pretty good neighbors friendly. Um, my only recommendation to them was to do, if they, I'm not hip to vegetation, because I think it needs maintenance, it could possibly die, so that my only recommendation would be something more permanent, but that would be for y'all to decide.
We're gonna raise a berm?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, that is a good question, raising a berm, and obviously, I understand the concept of a berm, but that berm can be, you know, it can be a foot, or it can be six foot, so do we have any suggestions, recommendations on that?
I, I think their initial concept showed some stone on the front of their building or part of their building. Uh, maybe recommend that they build a small stone fence that matches the building.
Okay. Kevin, any thoughts on any of this?
Uh, berm works fine as long as they're tall enough. You gotta go over them, and that's not a problem, they're done all the time. Uh, little stone wall works pretty well, too. Uh, if you just make sure that they keep the headlights on their property. Berm, the vegetation never works like you think it will.
Yeah, we've seen that before on downtown and other places.
First, first good, what was the name of that storm that came through?
I don't know. I didn't know they had names for those things.
Well, what I'm thinking of is just a good old Texas drought, I mean.
That, that or a winter storm that freezes everything, and you gotta start over, so I just recommend a solid berm or wall that deflects the light.
Okay. That sounds fair. Okay, Brian, anything else? Kevin, anything else? We're open the public hearing. All right, so with that, it's six fifty-two, and the public hearing is open. Is the developer here this evening?
They are not.
Okay, he's gonna say they could respond to anything if they wanted to. Okay, public hearing's open at six fifty-two, if anybody wants to comment about what you heard this evening.
Uh, just wanted to let everybody know here, we just moved in to six oh eight.
Okay, hang, hang on. City secretary's telling us, we need your name. Can you speak up? Yeah, can you take the mic, please?
My name's Dalton Thornton. Uh, me and my wife just moved into six oh eight, right there off of Johnson and Seventh.
Yeah.
And?
Y'all moved to town?
Yes, sir. We moved from Waco.
All right, good to have you.
Yes, sir. Uh, so I just wanted to let everybody know that that's where we're at.
Can we come visit?
Absolutely. Uh, yeah, so we're just, I don't, I don't have anything else to add, just wanted to come see the project and kind of see how that'll affect where we just moved into.
Yeah, well, look, we all know that any sort of growth affects people around it, so I think that some of the conversation tonight is to provide something that the city needs. I don't think anybody has disputed that, a skilled nursing facility. We've got significant aging population in McGregor.
Mm-hmm.
We've got one nursing home that's usually full, and I think it's a little bit different from what this is intended to be. Uh, from best we can tell, it's gonna be upscale, nice, provides a benefit to our elderly population, and our job is to make sure that it's as well done as possible, so that it doesn't affect, or has as minimal effect on your property and your neighbors around you as possible.
All right.
To protect your property values and your everyday life, so that's our goal, that's what we're trying to accomplish.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, Kevin's gonna be the first to go, but I'm?
I won't be long for it.
So, um, what can we do then about this berm issue? First of all, hang on, public hearing is still open. Anybody else? Six fifty-two, public hearing's still open? Uh, with that, the public hearing is now closed at six fifty-four, so let's go to the action item, which is discussion, possible action regarding final plat of a skilled nursing facility off Johnson Drive and Sixth Street, being eight point two six three acres, out of the original called ninety point two five five acre minute barret survey abstract number seventy-five, and being part of that called ninety-two point twenty-seven acres of land described in a deed to Lester Eugene Robertson et al. as recorded in volume thirteen oh five, page three oh six of the deed records of McClinney County, Texas, document number two thousand and six, zero one three five nine five. Okay, so council, it's our turn now. Again, I think it comes back to the question, what can we do to make sure that this berm is something more permanent than some crepe myrtles that probably won't last?
I heard you say that we, you know, like you were saying, the stones, some type of stone, or more of a fits type?
Yeah, some, some masonry or something that matches the architectural design of the building. I don't know, that's what I would go with, but.
So can we just get some assurance from city staff that, that there'll be something permanent, high enough to block headlights?
Put that in your motion.
Okay.
Make that a condition of the development, that they have a berm fence, wall that is high enough to block the headlights, that does not depend on vegetation.
Okay.
That's how I would word it, and then that way, we can work with them, it may be?
Could be a combination even.
Exactly right. That gives their architects some freedom, that they understand what you're going for.
Okay. What else, council? We can make a motion and then continue on, or we can talk about this. What are the concerns? Anybody have?
Well, I'll make a motion that we, uh?
Then you can just refer to, I'm sorry, Stephen, but item three, you don't have to rethrow that again?
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we approve item three with the stipulation that the developer provide a fence, wall, or berm suitable to ensure that the headlights do not disturb neighbors across the street on the other side of Johnson Drive.
I second.
Good, there's a motion of second on item three. Are the questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries. Item four is to hold a public hearing on final plat for hometown construction, plan development. Uh, it's Brewster BF, two point three seven acres. McClinney County Official Public Records at two thousand and twenty-two, zero four four seven two two. Go ahead, Brian.
Ready?
Yeah.
Okay, this is, uh, North Main, three seventeen. This is, uh, West Windsor going into Amslar Park, currently zoned R seven point two. Uh, the majority of the lots are forty-eight wide by two hundred long. Our zoning in that area is a sixty by one hundred, uh, but, uh, they still meet the requirement, ninety-six hundred square foot, come into us as a small plan development, to kind of get around the lot width there. Plans to build eighteen hundred square foot plus homes, uh, for the majority of them, three bedroom, two bath. Uh, the one on the end here is going to be, um, two thousand square foot and a four bedroom, and then they're gonna have a shared driveway for all of these houses right here, and then one off of Red Oak over here. Individual access to the park from the rear on all of these houses. Uh, this one will not have access, but all these will. He's gonna put gates on the back fence there, so the, the plan development addresses their lot dimensions. Uh, developer is donating a lower corner here, about a half acre, with a utility easement to the city, and in return, uh, we are, we've trimmed the trees along the fence here. We removed a tree from right here. Uh, we are boring, I'm sorry, we're cutting the street here to another manhole, and we're gonna put a manhole there, and he's gonna connect the rest of this as part of a trade-off for the, the property there. Uh, water is in the front of the property here, and then of course, off of Red Oak, and then the new sewer line, uh, for all of these houses will come down here, and then Red Oak will attach to sewer on Red Oak. Um, they are installing new culverts and a concrete pilot channel of, right here, so it'll narrow here, and it'll get wider as it goes down, help with the drainage there in the front.
So it drains, hits Windsor Road. Is there a what box culvert, culvert, culvert under Windsor Road there? Where's it go?
Yeah, it should, uh, should drain down here. It's a flood plain, so it'll drain down here, and I believe there's a, a culvert somewhere right in there.
And it ends up into Harris Creek?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And point out again where the shared drive is.
So they will have a, an entrance, shared drive entrance here, and then they'll come down this way, and they'll exit.
Okay.
Right here, this is their community mailbox. Uh, this is a little bit different. They made this house a, a bit larger footprint, and then to keep with some of the issue here with the property line, they moved this driveway out, but essentially, this is the, the layout here, and then this driveway for Red Oak comes out over there.
So is the driveways depicted by the spotted?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else, Brian, before we open the public hearing?
No, sir.
Okay.
The developer is here, if you have any questions.
Yeah, um, gotcha, Mr. Jutton. Ah, can't even say that. Matt, how about that?
Yes, sir.
All right. So Matt, the public hearing is open at seven o'clock, and before you speak, Matt, is there anybody who wants to, uh, address the council with, uh, under item four? Public hearing is open. Okay, Matt, go ahead.
All righty. I didn't really have much to say, but you've, you've asked some questions, Mr. Herring, so I just wanna make sure I address them.
Yeah.
Um, I do with the city, Brian does have some new updated drawings, because last time we were here, I know Kevin specifically, um, had wanted this. What we've done is we flipped this driveway. I do have a drawing here, if anybody needed to see it or wanted to see it tonight, you're welcome to look at this. Um, but this was a little jumbled up here, and so city allowed us to move this home actually back a little bit. That turns this home into roughly a twenty-one hundred square foot, uh, four bedroom, two bath home there, um, and keeps it not being so jumbled right there at that corner, uh, kind of exiting, so, um, what other questions, anybody?
So on Red Oak, there are three buildings, it looks like two houses. What's, what's the one in the middle?
Um, so that's the house, that's what I'm gonna build for our family, for, for me.
Okay.
So this is the house here. This is a, uh, three-car carport with storage, and this is an actual two-bay, eight-foot door shop right here.
Okay.
And it's, uh, it's metal shop with brickstone front on it.
Okay.
As well. And I've got renderings for the city on file as well, just so you all know.
Matt, you can scroll through them, then your overheads are in there.
Okay, here, I'll let you. I'm not sure, I'm not gonna get us lost. There we go.
I see.
So this is from three seventeen, and this is from Amslar Park, and this is from Red Oak in Maine, and then this is coming on from Maine.
So you're gonna live in what you're gonna develop, huh?
Yes, sir.
That's good.
And then that drainage ditch, you, that's another question you had asked. There is, um, RCP, that reinforced concrete pipe at the end of the drain that we're tying into.
Okay.
Kind of down here on that end, right before you get into the park. Yes, sir, right there. So we do that pilot channel, it'll go, basically, it'll just clean up that ditch line all the way.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Any questions for Matt, council? All right, with that, the public hearing is closed, and that takes us to item five, which is discussion, possible action regarding final plat for hometown construction, plan development, Brewster BF, two point three seven acres. McClinney County Official Public Records, two thousand and twenty-two, zero four four seven two two. Is there a motion under item five?
I make a motion to approve, uh, the final plat for hometown construction.
There's a motion of second under item five. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries. So Matt, what's your timeframe on getting started out there?
I guess we can.
Oh, good.
We're ready.
All right, great.
We're excited.
Yeah, so are we. We look forward to seeing it come up.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, uh, item six is to hold a public hearing on final plat of the parks, phase two A, also known as seventy-eight point seven five eight acres, being part of the L Jack's survey abstract four eighty, McClinney County, Texas.
Okay, so we are looking at phase two point A of the parks, so this is Parks One here, Cotton Belt and eighty-four, currently zoned R ten. Lots, uh, the lot sizes are eighty-three hundred square foot to twenty-two thousand square foot, so it just depends on which side of the street you're on. The smaller lot is over here, and the largest lot is there, so the arc kind of gives it some aesthetic to the neighborhood. Um, they're all spaced enough for building the size and style of homes. Uh, developers expressed a building in the style of Parks Phase One. Uh, water and sewer will connect from the lines of the old rail bed. Uh, they do have one entrance off of US eighty-four here. Tech dot is requiring them to have a D cell lane and a turn lane, and then the other entrance will be down here off of Edinburgh. Um, comments from Walker Partners have all been? Comments from Walker Partners have all been addressed, and then the shared use path from Tex dot, they have expressed that they're willing to assist with that in either this phase or a later phase, having some kind of connection over to that and participating in that.
How many lots are in that phase right here?
Forget the number. Off the top of my head, how many? Yeah, it's forty-seven.
It is phase one pretty well built out?
I think there's one lot over there, if I'm not mistaken.
Is that one lot that's not sold or one lot that's not built?
Not built. Yeah, it's, it's right, like right there somewhere, right off the main drag, Edinburgh.
Okay. All right, so final plat tonight, for what you see on the screen. Brian, anything else?
No. You've addressed all the comments several times.
Yeah. Okay, public hearing is open under item six. Phase two of the park, seven oh seven. Public hearing is closed. That takes us to item seven, which is discussion, possible action regarding final plat of the parks. Phase two A, also known as seventy-eight point seven five eight acres, being part of the L Jack's survey abstract four eighty McLennan County, Texas. Counsel, is there a motion under item seven?
I make a motion to approve the final plat of the parks phase two A.
Motion of second on item seven. Any other questions or comments?
I counted fifty. I think it was forty-seven in the first phase, where we were talking about it a week or two ago.
Do we know who the developer is? Right here, okay. Now, so in the development process, are you selling lots to builders? How's that working?
We don't know yet. We initially intended to build the houses, but we've had some folks ask, inquire about it, about if we're going to sell lots or not. The intent upfront wasn't to do that.
Yeah.
The world. You know, state was then restricted, you know, set up some restrictions on what we all have to.
Yeah, it's like two fifty, two fifty, yeah.
In there, the next piece of where we got to. Not sure yet.
Got you.
Answer your question.
Okay.
We will be building some. For sure.
Okay. Anybody else have anything?
Just like we asked the other gentleman, when do you think that, you know, this will start?
We're going to go and get off the plans, and once we get that back, I'm sure. I'm sure it's going to be there somewhere, but we're, we're going to count out there, I would think, just the length of time it takes.
And let's say someone, you know, wants a development. How, let's say we're looking at three, four months, how long do you think a house would be built? By the, by the beginning of next year, a house could possibly?
Stuff on the ground by Q two of twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
And our house will be eighteen hundred or twenty-five hundred square, somewhere in that spot, probably more towards the two thousand area at twenty-two hundred.
Is that similar to what was in phase one?
It's all over the place in there. Eighteen hundred or twenty-seven hundred there. So we're, you know, we're going to go similar what's, you know, what's there already. Probably a little less on the eighteen hundred, probably hang around that two thousand, five million. I mean, it's all going to depend on what's, what's going to drive it.
Sure.
You know, folks' minds.
Okay, thanks for the input. We got a motion of second. Anybody else? Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries. That takes us to item eight this evening, which is a closed meeting pursuant to chapter five fifty-one Texas government code in accordance with the authority contained in five, in section five fifty-one oh seventy-one legal, five fifty-one point zero seven-two real estate, five fifty-one point zero seven-four personnel, and section five fifty-one point zero eighty-seven economic development. Kevin, which ones are we under deny?
All economic development.
All right, so that takes us down to item D, which is economic development or Texas government code, section five fifty-one point zero eight-seven, discussion regarding economic development negotiations, including commercial or financial information received from a business prospect seeking to locate, stay, or expand in or near the city of McGregor to discuss economic development negotiations, and/or to deliberate the offer of a financial or other incentive to a business prospect. So with that, it is a little after about seven-ten. We will adjourn, go into closed session, come back out, take any action as necessary, and complete the agenda with items nine, ten, and eleven. This time we stand in closed session.
All right. Kevin, uh, wait, hang on. We are back into open session out of executive session with no action to take. That takes us to, uh, agenda item nine, announcements from the city manager.
Uh, lots of good things happening. The, uh, splash pad's gonna open pretty soon. Anybody got a date? Same as the pool day? Do we know what that is exactly? Uh, I know that we probably need to breathe a sigh of relief for Chad because he got the water meter in today and that was becoming a big issue. And I don't know about you, I would not want to be on the other side of Cassie in that conversation. Uh, and, uh, what else? You know, other than the report in the executive session, really not much. Housing continues to look good. Uh, had a conversation last week with George Eggers and his, uh, Morris Court's fixed the startup and he's working hard on the old school property as well. Uh, that'll be his next project after. And he's kind of looking at that leftover acreage from the new nursing facility, but he ain't gonna get there yet. They're well north of anybody else on land, price breaker, but that's today. We'll see what happens. That's it. Oh, my daughter's graduating. My oldest grandson in Colorado is graduating. I'm gonna be busy virtually every night between now and the end of May, and then I'm going to breathe. It may take a week or six off. That's actually funny because my wife ain't gonna leave the dogs at home, so I'm done, certainly.
All right. Um, item ten, request comments from the mayor indoor council.
Um, are we going to have to vote as a council on closing that little part of Sixth Street and Bike Night?
Uh, I don't really think so, but unless you just want to. When is that, Matt?
I think it's June the 11th. The rent revolution is, it's Sunday, June the 11th from like, I think, six to eight. We're gonna have Bike Night and we're gonna close about four or five blocks of Sixth Street. And some of the, we've got, we've been talking to neighbors and, um, a couple of churches. We'll have snacks and stuff. We're gonna have a little bit of music, maybe some little obstacle courses or something and invite the community, the kids to bring their bicycles out and in a safe area, ride up and down Sixth Street. We'll cook, my yard will cook hot dogs or something and just have a little family night. I mean, skateboards, bikes, wagons, whatever. No Harleys.
Can they come make the presentation on that from fifteen?
I know the way to get up here to make that presentation.
I don't think it would be specifically necessary, but I think it's good marketing for the deal itself.
Yeah.
And, uh, it kinda gets all right here. If anybody got some questions, ask anybody who got some questions. If anyone has any questions, uh, we prepared it out there. So we'll get on agenda.
And Kevin and committee, what do we stand with the money that we got from COVID?
Uh, the ARPA money?
Yeah.
That's part of what you're gonna be hearing on the streets. You've dedicated that money to the streets and that's, we're headed and, uh, they talked about Johnson Drive with the committee and
Okay.
they, uh, they wanted to put it in there and so he's gonna give it out. Like I said, that's what I said a minute ago, the ARPA money will go with that seven million if it's, let's pop a little bit bigger and
All right.
The development that came last month, do we know where we stand with looking into that street that we were gonna look at and I just noticed that they weren't on this agenda. Um, I can't remember the development.
You don't have the ranch?
Yes, there we are.
Okay, let me, let me get this. Uh, we had a meeting with Tech Dot Walker Partners and we had the, uh, traffic engineer that they used involved. And what we found out there is phase two was never considered in that study. Tech Dot was not, they were notified, they not, they weren't really a part of it. And so, uh, Jed Walker and Walker Partners are gonna write a letter that tells us what needs to happen on that and we're gonna give that to the developer and start that direction.
And then, um, so, you know, earlier we had some, some come before us on developments. Uh, I know you guys are probably discussing, uh, budget for the coming year. Are we looking at maybe getting more police officers? Cause I mean, that's, that's why I was asking, what is their timeframe of when they start expecting these houses to go up? Because, you know, we're getting, it's a lot more people. It's, you know, and I, I don't know how our police department is right now. I don't know. I, I know a lot of police departments are shorthanded. I don't know if we are, but anyways, I'm, uh,
I can't believe you said this in front of James. I'm just, I'm kidding. No, we're gonna be talking about some more park employees and some more police employees.
Okay, yeah, cause I mean-
You're gonna have to get there. Now, police employee is a lot easier said than done. We've actually got two in training, but one of them snapped his bicep, so he's had surgery. And then he gets to go back into training. He doesn't have to redo anything. He gets to go back into academy at that point. Uh, he did pass Redman, which is how he injured himself. That's a big hurdle to cross. Uh, and he's certainly proven himself an asset, so we're gonna stay with him until he gets through there. But you got a couple, a couple coming up now that we've already hired, but we'll look at at least one more position, maybe two, if he can afford it. But you're right. With growth comes responsibilities.
More crime, more people. I mean, you know, I would hope not, but I'm just-
James doesn't allow no crime.
No, I don't. Uh, and I talked to, uh, James today and in the past about the possible new, uh, school resource officer.
Yep.
But he's gonna leave that to the next super and talk about, I think, we still go in, put in the budget and be looking. Cause I don't wanna lose any more of my people.
Well, that change it with the legislation, cause I know they were like saying, trying to say every school would have to have a school resource officer.
The current legislation proposed is that every campus has an armed officer.
Yeah, that's why, I mean, again, something to think about.
Well, hopefully they'll bring some money along with that.
Yeah.
But, well, no, no, they don't. Unfunded mandates is something they love to do.
You, you, when you say a campus resource officer, when I think of campus, I think of the entire-
No, no, no.
No, it's like per-
Each individual.
Primary elementary, junior high, high school.
That's, they're not gonna pay for that.
No, they're not.
Well, and if they're talking about armed individuals, that's not necessarily police officers.
Oh, yeah, they said the teachers could be.
Well, that's already there. What they're, what they may be talking about is that they require schools to have somebody who's trained and armed. And that would mean that they would have to initiate the martial program, which a lot of schools have chosen not to do. That system is out there and is available. We've offered to train them for free. We've got people very qualified to do that training. So we'll see and we'll react accordingly whenever they come up with whatever they do. Right now, the legislature is in session and we are all in danger.
Okay. Anybody else? At eight fifteen, this meeting's adjourned.